Good afternoon and welcome to the meeting of the Council Budget Committee. We have a number of items that we need to take care of this afternoon and a number of folks that we need to hear from. As you know, this, as we said last week, this is the, one of the final stages of our budget adoption. The city manager has put together a recommended budget that he recommended to the mayor, and the mayor has made changes that he wishes to make in that and has given it to the committee. The committee will be hearing today from a couple of the department heads and then we will, and throughout the meeting, we will be dealing with our list of items that we want to add and our list of items that we would like to delete. So with that, let's, let's get started. Do any of the committee members have anything to begin with? Okay. One of the, one of the things that we received from the Finance Director, I want us to make a, I want us to take a look at the add/delete list that is, or the add/delete items from last week. As you remember, if you add an item to the budget, you have to show us where you want to delete an item in order to get that funding going. We cannot increase the total budget, but we can make amendments in order for the budget to reflect what the council would like to do. One of the items on the add/delete list, Ms. Alexander, that I would like to bring to your attention is the first item on the list that says CM Staff Tax Assessor. There's a, to correct a pay grade. I'm, the city manager's staff does not have the authority to put items on the add/delete And so if the tax assessor would like to have something changed in that budget, the tax assessor needs to come talk to us. Okay. I'm sorry?
So we're crossing number one off?
We're crossing that number one off. Are there any of the others, that anyone has a question about? Okay, I do want to let you know that in the, in our meeting next week, we will be meeting in the school board office room, boardroom in the building across the way here. That is election day. If you have not already voted, you be sure to vote on election day. But the Elections Department uses this room for their calculations and their counting of the ballots and so forth. So we will, we will move over across the way for our next week's meeting. Okay. Ms. Alexander, oh, one of the other things, we, the board members have been given a stack of papers about this thick, and we are not going to discuss every one of those. I would suggest to you that you take those home with you and that you spend the next week going through that and not try to go through it this afternoon. We are already beyond where I had hoped we would be, so, time-wise. So Ms. Alexander, if, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a couple of questions just going through some of these personnel changes. I have the question, there's two municipal court judges that are on this list, and I was wondering, who was, are we authorized to add judges to our budget, or does that come out of, I thought that was a state. I, I have that question about the two judges, for municipal court judges.
The two positions?
Yes, there's two positions in the budget. And I was under the impression that we weren't the ones that authorized that.
Well, for the municipal court judge, there, there are two clerk positions, one deputy clerk, two position, as well as a support clerk, two.
These are judges. On the list, it says two judges.
So, Madam Chair, if I may.
Mr. Higley.
So, it wasn't mid-year, sometime, the three council members who are charged with oversight for, you said municipal court?
These are municipal court.
Not recorded court, okay.
That, not probate.
Okay, not recorded.
This is on here as from municipal court. Right here, municipal court judge, municipal court judge, new, new. So why are some of, so these are coming from the judge, not from the clerk? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
The other, the other one I had, question I had was the assistant golf pro position, shouldn't that come from the golf authority? Shouldn't that come out of the golf authority's budget?
It does.
Then why is it on our budget?
Well, the golf authority submits the budget to the council for approval. That position is a position that will receive city benefits, and so it's listed for inclusion in the mayor's proposed budget for the council to adopt.
So, but if it's coming from the golf authority's budget, then shouldn't our part, that comes out of our budget just for the benefits, it's showing 52,00710?
That is with, the salary and benefits for that position.
But wouldn't the salary come out of the golf authority and then the, the benefits would come out of the city?
Because it's an enterprise fund, all of it is charged to the golf authority.
So, like, it's coming out of the golf authority's funds?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, Ms. Alexander?
Yes. So in addition to the packet that you received, the handouts from Human Resources, there were some referrals that were made by the council last week. There was a request from Council Davis pertaining to some information for the career ladder maintenance. That is included in the packet that you received, and the HR director can provide more explanations for the career ladder adjustments. Council Tucker requested a listing of all positions by department and a listed, a listing of vacant positions. That's also included in that packet that you received from HR, the HR handouts. There was a request, sorry, from Councilor Thomas for specific job descriptions.
Excuse me, Ms. Alexander, are you going through this document right here?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know that we need to go through this entire document this afternoon. We, we need to have an opportunity as the committee to take a look at it and read it and see what it says, and then if we have additional questions, to come back to you. But I do not want us to spend the time to go through this document and all of the attachments.
Oh, I'm not, I'm just speaking about it, and I was, it was requested that I put together a presentation to discuss the, the document, so that's all I'm doing. I have five more slides, and I'll run through those fairly quickly. Or not.
Well, we're spending more time discussing this than it would take you to go through it, I guess. But, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. So there was a requesting for a listing of all the job descriptions. That's also in that packet. We didn't know if we would have that information today, but you do have that for the positions that are included in the budget. There, for all of the other positions, just throughout the government, that is available on the city's website. Council Davis did want a listing of the personnel recommendations from the recent audits, that's attachment A, as well as the financial statements. These are the audited financial statements from the Sheldon Authority, that is attachment B. Attachment C is a listing of all of the TAD funds and the projects that were committed for each fund as attachment C. Council Davis also requested the information pertaining to the Community Care Fund, how much is available, what's been expended for the last three years, that is attachment D. There was also a request for the Economic Development Fund, what's available and what's been committed. You have that in your packet as attachment E. Then there was a request made regarding the CBA bonds that was issued for Golden Park in terms of the initial debt service payments. Those are coming out of OLOS infrastructure. The rest for future payments will either be OLOS infrastructure or some other budgeted funds. There are still the requests we have pending here for the steps to implement a transient fee for our Integrated Waste Program. Our staff is still conducting additional research for that. We've reached out to the Water Works for additional information. We have not received that as of today. And then, lastly, the purpose of the study for Oxbow Creek is to subsidize, obviously, the operational cost for the nine-hole golf course, which is located in South Columbus. Prior to FY24, the annual subsidy amount was $150,000. That's it.
Other questions for Ms. Alexander? Okay.
And typically, as a point of clarification, Madam Budget Chair, what is on the list usually is, which I'll remove this first item, but just as a point of clarification, what's placed on the list is typically, it stays on the list to either be voted up or down when we go through the add/delete process.
I'm sorry, I, you're gonna have to say that again.
Well, I was just saying, I removed item number one, as you requested.
Yes.
But just as a point of clarification, typically when a counselor places, places an item on the list, the item stays on the list until we get to the add/delete process.
You said if a counselor places it on the list?
Yes.
I said the city manager's staff does not have the authority to place anything on the list. If the tax assessor wants the budget, her budget corrected in any way, she needs to come to see us next week and tell us that.
Yes, ma'am. I have it on the schedule.
Okay. Anything else at this point?
No, ma'am.
I see that there are a number of our department heads sitting in the audience. Do we need to get to them so that they don't have to sit here, or they?
They're just attending the meeting.
Just attending the meeting, that's fine.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, I just didn't want them to have to sit here and twiddle their thumbs if they were waiting to make a statement or something to us. Okay, thank you, Ms. Alexander. One of the things that I did talk to Ms. Alexander about before our meeting, I have been asked by the Chief Judge to put into the budget to increase the number of days that the juvenile court judge, Judge Dugan, performs each, each week, from three days to four days, ending December 31st and then beginning January 1 of '25, to move from, to five little days. And Ms. Alexander has told me that this has to go through a process. Ms. Alexander, you want to just take that, that mic there and, on the table and, and explain what that is so that we know how to, what we need to do to proceed on this?
Yes, ma'am. So the juvenile court judges do fall under the jurisdiction of the Superior Courts, and so the Superior Court judges, they do set the salary for the juvenile court judges, but there is a process in which that information has to be advertised. I will get with the clerk for juvenile court to determine what the pay amounts will be exactly effective July 1st and what the subsequent amount will be effective January 1st, so we can make sure that we have that included for the, for the list for next Tuesday.
Okay, and then you'll bring that back to us next week?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I guess we are now ready for the presentations that are to be made to us this afternoon, and we're gonna start with Parks and Rec. Ms. Braderich, you will come to the mic, we will turn it to you.
My apologies. Good afternoon, members of council, mayor. Thank you for allowing me to come this afternoon. I wish I could say my presentation's gonna be brief, but I will make it as brief as possible. First, I want to say thank you for the generous items that were already recommended by the mayor and others for fiscal year '25, but I feel like throughout the year, we get asked a lot of times for certain things to be handled within our department that are often not budgeted. So I feel like today is our opportunity to come forward and bring those items to you, and many of you will recognize items that at some point you may have asked for yourself in your district. And so that's our point for coming today, to bring those items back to you that may have been mentioned throughout the year. Always like to start off so that those who are not familiar can become more familiar with our department. So here are the facts about our department and the things that we oversee, from the acreage to the parks, trail space, bathrooms, facilities, fields, everything that our department maintains here in the city of Columbus. And you can see from this list, it's substantial. We have 82 restrooms. Those are not just, you know, individual buildings, they're stalls. I mean, it's, it's multiple things here throughout the city that we must maintain. And all of this will become much more clear as I go through my presentation on why I'm showing you these numbers, such as 750 litter containers, 750 trash containers around the parks, throughout ballfields, throughout our facilities, and we manage that, not Public Works. That's managed by Parks and Recreation. So also, I want to bring some of the challenges and why we're requesting these things. And please understand, when I come before you, I'm not requesting these items for myself, I'm requesting for, like, the group of children that you saw before you today. I'm requesting for the citizens that live in your districts, your constituents, and those who come to you and ask you questions on why we can't do certain things. Not because I want these items just for myself or for our department, I do, but it's to benefit our community and the people who live here. So often, we ask for equipment, and you're gonna see that today in my presentation. Our equipment is aged, worn out, need a replacement. We need new football goals, goalposts, you're gonna see that in a moment. We need new goalposts. Why? Because ours are aged. We've repaired them, we've welded them, but it gets to a point where we just can't continue to do that. And for the safety of those who use them, we want to make sure that they get replaced. We're in need of mowers. Often, you get complaints from your citizens that are asking for us to cut the grass more. It's difficult when we don't have the mowers to do so. It's also hard to maintain and keep pace when we lack equipment. But the other part to that is hand-in-hand, we also lack, lack the staff or personnel to do so. Many times come before you, you mentioned how many positions we've been cut over the last 20 years, and at some point, we have to start adding back to maintain and keep pace. So with leagues and the administrative side of things, we do things 365 days a year. There's no longer a season for most things. It is year-round, whether it be baseball, softball, soccer, you name it, most things are year-round now, which was not the case many years ago. Other part to that is our vehicles are worn out, they're aged, they're in dire need of replacement. We need vans, we need vehicles to transport the children who are in our programs or our senior participants who come to our facilities. We can't do that safely and adequately anymore. We need the vehicles to be able to do those type things. Like I mentioned before, we lack funding to replace equipment. We need fitness equipment, we need tables, chairs. Some of these are basic, and it sounds like they're basic, but when you have 10 facilities and you're talking 500 chairs, that's not like going to Walmart and buying a chair anymore. That's ordering in mass volume. And that's where we find ourselves. We cannot program or operate without the necessary things to keep kids and people coming to our buildings. And our budget has not been increased operationally in many of those areas, from recreation to seniors to therapeutics, in many, many years. And without that funding, the cost of things has dramatically increased over the last 20 years, but our budget has not kept pace. We also lack the adequate staff to operate these facilities. It's hard to operate a facility when you have one full-time person in a facility, regardless of how many part-timers you have, which, by the way, we are struggling and continue to struggle to fill, to fill part-time positions. But it's hard when you have one full-time person to operate a facility for 40 hours or 40-plus hours a week, and then you're without that person. It's very difficult. But our staff have done a great job of platooning and working together as a team to try to keep buildings open and keep our doors open, keep the facilities operational, but it's getting harder and harder to a point that we're gonna find ourselves having to close buildings because we don't have the staff to maintain to open them. We need vehicles. We need vehicles to operate and get our jobs done for all our divisions because they haven't been funded. We've had salvage or certain vehicles that had to be surplus. They were in an accident or something, and we don't have them replaced. We need those replaced. We're also gonna be asking for funding to operationally fill in the gaps for outdoor pools. The splash funding we received built the pools, but there's not enough money in it for us to buy picnic tables and some of the amenities that are gonna be needed to open the pools. Another thing that requires for us is the vandalism and violence that we see in the parks. We're probably gonna talk about park rangers at some point today. And just huge kudos to the warden and his staff for coming on board with us last fall. They've been amazing. The community has really spoke highly of the services they've provided, but we can be more effective, we can be more cost-effective, we can be more efficient, we can have more hours to implement that program in our parks and see that we have a presence in our parks, and our community can see we have a presence in our parks. I mentioned before that we have 750 litter containers in the city. We currently have one driver and one truck to do that. And we run our trash service almost seven days a week, 365 days a year. There's a small gap in the winter that we do not, but most of the time, it's 365 days, seven days a week. We need more staff to cut the ballfields. I don't know if that was able to be shared with you, but I have a document that shows how many staff we have in park services, what their requirements are, where they work. It's just not enough people to get the job done. Many of you ask me a lot of times, why do they not, why do you not have a dedicated park crew at some of your locations in your parks? Heath Park, for example, is one that I know we've discussed previously. Cooper Creek is another that I've discussed previously with councilors. We don't have the staff dedicated anymore. We just, because of cuts, we don't have that. So we have very few staff that are dedicated park crew staff. That makes a difference. In a, in a big park, when you have people who can go there every day versus they're having to go to five parks every day, it's not gonna look the same. We can't manage it the same if we don't have the people. So we're gonna ask for more people. We have six people who clean 82 restrooms every day. Six people to clean 82 restrooms every day. And I could promise you, as much as we would like to think that people keep places clean, especially when it's a restroom, that is not the case many times when our folks arrive at a restroom. It will be vandalized, it will be destroyed, so that takes even longer than just going in and basically cleaning a restroom. But we have six people who clean 82 restrooms. That's not counting special events, when we have something at South Commons or at Woodruff Farm. Those are additional to that. And all of that has to be cleaned, because we want our visitors who come here, not only our visitors, but our citizens who are here every day, to have clean amenities. Another thing that I, we asked for in our budget this year was a staff member to manage grants. Over the last three years, our department alone has acquired over $3.5 million. Grants can help pay for those type positions, to get us more money, to get us money that doesn't come out of general fund, that gets us money that can purchase and do some of these things that we desperately need done in the parks. We need dedicated staff also to market programs and events and activities. We asked for a marketing manager, somebody who could do that, because the more people we bring and the more revenue we generate, the better we're gonna be. And that's the biggest thing we often hear, is people say they don't know what we have going on. Well, we have over 20 venues in the city, and we're pretty good about our social media, but still, having a market, marketing person to put the word out, to communicate, and you can call him at whatever you like, communications manager, marketing manager, but somebody who's able to do that. Right now, you're looking at the person who helps do that. Our deputy director, Ms. Summerlin, is the same. We have other jobs to do, and that can't become a priority when I'm trying to answer a response to someone or do, do something else. So I say all that to, to cover our challenges before I jumped into all of our capital and all of our annual requests, but wanted to be cleared so that everyone knew why we request the things we do and why we graciously need these items to make our department successful and to be here for the community. Here is a list of our capital outlay request. You will see, at most years, for the past three or four years, someone has asked if we rank them, so we have already done that this year in order as much as possible. So you're gonna see that. And I also need to say, you know, a huge thank you. In 20, for fiscal year 2014, we got about $100,000 in different capital items. Thank you. That makes a difference for us to be able to operate. Mid-year, we received right about $350,000. That's great, we can use it, but you're gonna still, you still see the list behind you here, or in front of you. Here's the remaining things that we have not gotten, even though we've been able to receive some items, and we're hugely thankful for that, but we need more. So you're gonna see, the first thing on our list, we need goalposts. We need goalposts for A.J. McClung. They need to be replaced. We need more mowers. We need some correctional vehicles. And let me say, when we talk about correction vehicles, and this is something that, I apologize, I should have conferred with, with our Finance Director, Ms. Angelica Alexander, but one of the things I would like to ask is, is there a potential for our inmate vehicles, because they're used by corrections officers, to use OLOS? Instead of this coming out of the general government, because these are items that are used for public safety individuals, with public safety individuals, could they be considered to come out of OLOS versus coming out of general fund? Just thinking about things in a little different way. The other thing that's not on our list that I would like for us to consider is, if we're able to continue and get the park rangers this year, if you're, if we were funded for them, we're gonna need vehicles. We work very closely with Public Works. We've already had a conversation with them about what vehicles salvage-wise, but we'll be taking somebody else's department, and primarily the Sheriff Department right now, because that's whose vehicles Fleet has. We're gonna be taking a vehicle that they no longer want, that's so bad that they're no longer using it, but my department will take it because we have nothing. But then the question becomes, could we purchase those vehicles for park rangers? Could that come out of OLOS versus us taking a vehicle that has a large number of miles or maybe has issues with an engine or whatever? Is it more cost-effective for us to do so? You see on here, we have ballfield machines and more, different mowers. We need vehicles, as I mentioned before, we need vans for our Recreation Division, for our Senior Division. And please understand, we put them in here by, because we have different divisions, but just because a van is listed for Recreation, don't think it doesn't get used for anybody else who needs it. We're not, it's not segmented in that way, that's just how we budget and how we request. But it could be used for anybody. So even though it was given to Recreation, it's given to Parks and Recreation. We're this city, we're one department, it's used for whoever needs it across the board. The next was for community schools and our after-school programs, our summer programs, we need our vehicles replaced. We need tables, chairs, treadmills. We need a vehicle for our community school staff to go to sites, to drop off and deliver their equipment, their supplies. We have 13 sites across the city that every day we have students in, and there's always a need for supplies to be dropped off. We need a roller at Cooper Creek. Everyone knows we're getting ready to reopen three outdoor pools and eventually add six splash pads. We need vehicles for staff to drive to get to those, to carry equipment, to carry supplies. We don't have those right now. We have one pickup truck in aquatics, and another truck that really, if we haven't already salvaged, it needs to go to salvage because it's about 20 years old, and so it needs to go. Again, I mentioned that we have items that are not in the scope of the outdoor pool rebuild. We have over $50,000 that we need in picnic tables, the raw, or the metal-coated picnic tables that need to go into the pools once they're replaced. So we ask for $100,000 there. We need some upgrades to the Aquatic Center. We've got some equipment there that we've been told needs to be replaced quickly so that it doesn't go out. That will help us with our temperatures, so we're asking for money there. We need pottery wheels in our pottery division. We need to replace the floor, we need wheels, we need slab rollers. We need exhaust fans. All of those belong to Britt David for our pottery studio that's well past its age and ultimately needs to be replaced. But we can continue to operate, we just need supplies to make that happen. We need a hood installation, senior section, commercial stove. And these sound like little things, but they all add up in our department. There's not funding. Our senior division has a very small budget. So if we're wanting to buy fourteen thousand dollars' worth of stoves, they would have no operating for the year if we do that. We need a double-sided commercial freezer, same thing. We need weight equipment. We need tables in the senior section. Uniforms for our park rangers. And these are the items that get into our items for park rangers. Uniforms, belts, pistols, holsters, ammunition, radios. We need to purchase two utility vehicles so that when they want to patrol, if we're trying to patrol smaller areas like the trails and places that we don't encourage people to drive vehicles for environmental reasons and for safety reasons, we need a smaller way for them to do so. We need a utility trailer to be able to haul those vehicles on. We need, I put in here trash trucks, but we've had the conversation with Public Works and are able to go and get their trash trucks. If we don't receive trash trucks, but we were able to receive staff to at least run trash trucks, the conversation has already been had with Public Works and Fleet, and we will take their old trash trucks and we will run those. But we just need the manpower to be able to run them. We need a Ford Explorer in Recreation Services. We used to have a Crown Vic and an Impala, both have been, to my understanding, salvaged. They met the criteria, they were worn out, and it costs too much for us to maintain them anymore. We didn't get them replaced, so we need a vehicle. We need AV equipment, so kids have something to do when they go to the rec centers. We need, I'm sorry, that was all of my capital before I shift gears. We asked for also operational adjustments this year. Again, they're
Excuse me, Ms. Do you, do you have that list printed out for us?
I can, I don't have it, but I can, yes ma'am.
Well, I mean, there are forty-something items on that list and
Sure. Okay, my apologies, yes. Operational adjustments. So these are the items that are needed operationally because as I mentioned before, our operations has not been adjusted. This first page you'll see is park rangers. For us to bring on park rangers, we're going to need the operating money for them to operate, whether it be vehicle fuel, office equipment, like training, materials, things for them to operate. And please let me say, you know, park rangers is something that we haven't had since the nineties in our department. And although the, you know, we're wanting them in our department, the conversation's been had that they will work closely with the chief, or whoever the chief designates for Columbus Police Department. They're going to have to have the same requirements to a degree of being post-certified. I think from my understanding, and if I'm wrong, someone please correct me, but they will be able to write citations and things of that nature. The only thing their ability, because I had a counselor recently ask me, would they have arrest powers? My understanding, that's the only thing they don't have, is arrest powers. But currently, our MCP officers that go out, they can't write citations. They can't write tickets, they can't do any of those kinds of things. They're there as a community advocate for the parks and to report anything they see. Park rangers have more authority than they do. And that's why I'm asking for this in a different way. They would have to be post-certified, they would carry a weapon, things of that nature. So it's a little bit different. And twenty-one hundred, which is our park services division, you can see a lot of this are just utility increases that we ask for because to keep pace with the rising cost of utilities. That is pretty much what we've asked for here. We've asked for some additional landscape supplies to keep pace with what needs to be replaced locally, some operating material costs because costs have risen drastically, but our budget has not. Maintenance, education and training, which is very minor, and travel schools and conferences, which again is minor because costs have gone up. And Recreation Services, again, you're going to see utilities is one of our big things that we're asking for. We need utility costs to be increased. Some special event funding, operational money because they have not received operational increase in a very long time. Copier, again, natural gas, water, and then some additional auto parts and supplies. Memorial Stadium, we're asking for operational increase, grounds increase and water, so utilities again. Athletics, we need to adjust their budget. Their budget hasn't been increased in probably over twenty years as well, although their jobs and responsibilities have. And the number of people we service, the number of leagues and opportunities here in the city has grown drastically. Our athletics division has actually decreased. When I started with the city in two thousand and two, we had roughly nine employees in that division. Today, we have two. Those nine were full-time, we have two full-time today. But I'm pretty sure since two thousand and two to now, we oversee way more leagues, way more participants, way more youth, but have way less people to do it with. Copier charges and again, motor fuel in that area. Community schools, community schools is our after and before-school program. They oversee all of our children and our out-of-school time for children. So operating materials, mobile phone, local education and training, other purchased services, uniforms, special event, membership, office supplies and travel schools. And let me say, in this area, for the last three years, we've had additional funds because of the department. As I mentioned about applying for grants, we have a staff member in this department, or me in this division, who's very good about applying for grants, and she received about three hundred fifty thousand dollars over the last three years to help offset her budget. So that's how we've been able to stay afloat and continue to have one of the best, if not the best, after-school program in the city. Our program and curriculum is totally steam-based, both in school time and out-of-school time. And so kids have a wealth of opportunities that are education-based, if you will. It's fun, but it's education-based, just don't tell them that. Cooper Creek, operating material increase, cable increase, copier charges, uniforms, membership dues for Cooper Creek. Again, you're going to see a lot of this is operational requests because they haven't gotten or haven't seen an increase in a number of years. Lake Oliver, every year, our merchandise for redistribution runs over. We've already exceeded our merchandise for redistribution, so what does that mean? That means when we have to purchase lures or fishing equipment or worms or things of that nature, we're making money. So we're selling those items and making money back, but our budget has already, we've already expended all the money that's set aside for us for merchandise for redistribution. So we're at a point now that we could still make more money, but we can't spend any money because we don't have any more merchandise redistribution or operating at this point because we've done, the staff has done such a great job, they've already spent it, and we've already received the revenue for that. So we just need more money so we can make more money, very simply, easiest way to put it. No, it goes into general fund because we're a general fund budget. And so that goes back to general fund. It does not come directly to us since we're funded through the general fund. So operating materials, mobile phone and water increase in their division. Aquatics, a lot of these are the things that were already recommended in the mayor's budget. These are the things that we're going to have to have when we bring back online extra or not, or the three pools and the six splash pads. This is money that we haven't needed in the last few years because we haven't operated them. But coming back, this is going to be needed, and this is already in our recommended budget for aquatics. Aquatics outdoors is different from aquatics indoors, so now you see forty-four fourteen, which is Aquatics Center. And these are the increases that we ask for, water, mobile phone and copier to keep up with the cost pace that we've seen. Pottery shop is our Britt David pottery studio. Again, operations, other purchase services, some education and training, travel schools and conferences and cable increase. And then in the senior division, cable increase, motor fuel, water and gas for their division. And now I get into capital improvements. And this is another part where throughout the year, we get asked about replacing certain things and doing certain things. And we ultimately sometimes have to say no because we're not budgeted for it. So you can see here, we need to replace the dock bumpers at Lake Oliver. Citizens come in and their boats are getting scratched on the edges because our bumpers are in poor condition and need to be replaced. On here, you'll see resurfacing of tennis courts, replacing carpet at the supercenters, resurfacing the tennis courts, which we did discuss this morning at Frank Chester. And Lake Bottom needing to laser tape surfaces at Cooper Creek to create Cooper Creek Satellite Office, replace the restrooms at Tillis and playgrounds. A lot of times I get calls from citizens and from counselors alike on why haven't we replaced X, Y, Z playground? Because the playgrounds that we replaced since two thousand and fifteen to now, we've done in cooperation with community reinvestment. We've used CDBG funding to do it. And because they fall within a certain socioeconomic census tract that we're, or mapping area that we're able to use those funds, these remaining playgrounds that you see here is because they do not qualify and we do not have the funding at almost two hundred thousand dollars a playground to replace those. So that's why you see the list here of those spaces that have not been replaced to date. Big ticket item, but going to be needed in the years to come, we need to replace our senior center. Gallops is one of the most popular senior centers and senior locations for participants, but it is extremely outdated and extremely worn and needs to be replaced for our citizens here in Columbus. We need lights at Woodruff Soccer Complex. We've received some money in our mid-year for Woodruff, which is fabulous, and we're going to use that. But we desperately need to replace our lights at Woodruff to make it more, more cost-efficient, but also because they're old and they need to be replaced to LED. Also on here, and Counselor Davis mentioned this earlier today about lighting, our splash funds that are allocated for Cooper Creek, the park has not seen renovations in over twenty years. And it may take us all four million dollars to do those renovations. However, that doesn't cover the tennis center. The tennis center has had updates and has had things done to it, unlike the park. And so that is why we put on here LED lighting for the Cooper Creek Tennis Center because we could desperately use, we wholeheartedly agree with Corte. We'd love to see that take place, but it's just not something we're budgeted for right now. So we're estimating that would cost us about a million dollars. We also need to replace the fencing. Our fencing is old and worn, broken in some places, and it needs to be replaced at the tennis center. And then the next is our pottery studio, just like Gallops. It's very worn, it's very outdated, it could very much use a refresh for us to be able to accommodate those individuals in our, in our community. There are times that we can't take any more people because the building's just not big enough and we can't accommodate anybody else because the building is just not big enough. It's not designed for a population of two hundred and six thousand when we only have one cultural arts studio here in the city. And then to repaint the recreation centers. Our newest recreation center was built in two thousand and two. We opened May fifth, two thousand and two. That was Northside, I know because I was the director there. In twenty-two years, we've very much not seen money to repaint our recreation centers, and that's the newest one. So we've got to put money back in our facilities to get us another twenty years. Next, I'll go into personnel requests, and I've mentioned this before. We're just desperately understaffed. From a full-time status, our department has primarily operated for many, 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 many years on part-time status, and we've reached a point where we, we just can't operate that way anymore. We need more full-time staff to help get the job done. My staff are burnt out, they're working six, seven days a week without breaks, unable to take off time because there's nobody else to fill in for them if they're not there. So athletic programmers, we're asking for three of those. We've talked about before how we opened the marina back in two thousand and nine. We've not been adding any additional staff there, we need to add another full-time staff there. Our program supervisor, we need another, with all these extra aquatic facilities coming on, with six splash pads alone, we need another staff person to help oversee those. I suspect that once people see them and how amazing they're going to be, we're going to get lots of requests for use of them from the public, from schools and childcare facilities. And we need somebody who can, who can manage that because right now, we just don't have someone who can do that. We need full-time people in our rec centers. Like I said before, I've been here twenty-two years. When I started, I had a full-time assistant, which was the, basically the assistant director of the facility. That gave us two full-time people. One of us was always there, one of us was always there. That can't always be the case now because we only have one full-time person at our facilities. So we requested to add back that assistant director because that would mean that we could always have a full-time person there on site and make sure that we're never in danger of not being able to open a facility for the public. Lifeguards, this is money that we ask for to, to ensure that we have enough money to pay once we reopen the three other pools, so that's why lifeguards. And we don't have a number on that, it's not by position, it's a pool of money because their wage. So we ask for it in that way. Same thing for pool managers and assistant pool managers and sessionnaires. All of those are tied together to the operation of the outdoor pools and splash pads. And then the next was a specialist two or the assistant position back at Britt David. We also used to have that position, it was cut in the middle or mid-two thousands. But there used to be a position there as well, and we no longer have. Then we talk about outdoor pools. We're going to need some maintenance staff. We want to make sure we maintain all of these facilities, we want to make sure we can do that. So we are asking for two maintenance workers to make that happen. Here you'll see our park rangers, we're asking for five park rangers and one chief. And if you'll notice at the bottom of the screen with the asterisk, we currently spend about eight thousand dollars a week, fifty-two weeks, which is about four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a year, for one hundred and fifty-seven to one hundred and sixty hours a week of patrol. We're paying a third party, again, to operate with MCP, which is fabulous. We, I can't speak highly enough about the warden and the job that his staff have done. But if we hire five rangers and a chief, we can put two hundred to two hundred and forty hours a week on the street and in our parks for less money, for four hundred and two thousand plus revenue that we would receive from tickets or citations. Like I said, I know they're not police officers, but they would have more powers than our current MCP officers do out in the parks. So we see that as value plus the fact that they can generate some revenue to offset their cost. So we see that as a win. And a win for the community and a win for those who use our parks, for it to be safer and cleaner all the way around. We're also asking for part-maintenance workers, forty-eight of those. And how do we derive that? Because we're trying to create crews, we're trying to give you what you need in these parks so that they're maintained every day versus every other day or every three days or every four days when somebody can get back to that park because they've got, whoops, they have five or six other parks that they have to work or whatever that number is. We were given for, let me find my, my list. We were granted, out of the, out of our requests, we were granted four already through the mayor's proposed. So we have four listed right now in the recommended budget out of that forty-eight. But we're asking for the forty-eight, and then the crew supervisors would be to make the crews like we talked about, to be able to oversee those spaces. And then we're asking for some overtime because our staff, again, if you have ever, have been to South Commons, you know that almost every weekend, we have an event at South Commons. And so we have a tremendous amount of overtime that we accrue for that as well as other Little League, Sally, National, all of the leagues that play, there's times that we have overtime as well. Here's our trash truck drivers that we requested, MEO threes as trash truck drivers so that we can get all that trash picked up. That is another, something that was already part of our recommended budget. And then athletic chiefs. One of the things about us is we have staff that go out to these leagues and at South Commons. Anytime we're having events, we're making sure that we have plenty of staff on site. And even when it's just league nights and they're having recreational league play, we need somebody from the city there if something happens or there's a need for something, we have staff there. Next was our recreation specialist twos. Those are the full-time positions that are just like in the rec centers, but it's specifically for the senior centers. We were asking for two of those. And then here, I get into the marketing manager, which I explained earlier. The grant manager, I explained earlier. We also would like to add two support specialists to the Aquatics Center so that if we are short a staff member, somebody is quits or is out sick, we can still operate. With the three we have right now, they basically swap places with each other. One works X number of hours, the next person comes in as soon as they're getting off and they swap and they rotate all day long. But if somebody's out or somebody resigns, we have nobody to work that shift of hours because we can't work our staff over twenty-nine hours, and so we need some additional help. And then the last one was, I think I was once told that I'm probably the only department head in the city who doesn't have an assistant, administrative assistant. And, but you can see, again, as rankings go, that's very low on the totem pole for us as a department. But I'd be remiss if I didn't put it in there. And so that was the, the last personnel request that we had. And then I have for questions, but I want you all, again, as I started off today, I'm not here to ask for this money for me personally. I'm not here to ask for the staff per se. I'm here to ask for the money for these people that you see on the screen, that these are people who are in our programs, using our parks, using our facilities. So this is who I'm asking for the money for, to use here in the community to make the quality of life that we are desperately trying to provide for the community. It's for these people. Every one of these pictures you see is somebody who's using our facilities. These are pictures that came off our social media and are things that we do every day.
Counselor Tucker.
Director Browder, thank you for this presentation. In reference to the park maintenance worker two, I'm not sure if it's listed, 22 actual workers, employees that we actually have, or 22 that's on the books. I'm not sure, I'm looking at.
That is positions that we actually have, and to my knowledge right now, they're all full. If they're not, we might only be missing one or two, but those are all full, to my understanding. Yes, ma'am? So they're just not open positions, they're actual people working.
So that, that was one of the things, I know I had requested. I was trying to see exactly what positions that we have. I mean, that was all citywide, not just for parks and rec, but which ones we had actually filled versus unfilled.
Sure.
To help with this budget process.
Absolutely. So in Park Services, if you look at the handout that I see you have there, probably 99% of those positions are full because they're the bulk of our full-time positions in the department. Parks and Recreation has roughly 120 full-time positions, and the bulk of them come from Park Services for obvious reasons. And they predominantly always have their, as of the last year, year and a half, when we've shared update information with Director Hollowell, that's an area that's been full. We've been able to keep those positions relatively full. Every once in a while, somebody will leave the position, but we don't have trouble filling those positions. We've been pretty, pretty successful.
Were you considering converting some of your part-time employees?
In that area, there's not enough, we only have two or three.
I'm just saying, overall, because I, I know, I can't remember exactly how many part-time positions you have throughout.
We do, but this is the thing about it, so.
I know lifeguards, probably like, no.
No, lifeguards is not one. But we did take a look at like recreation center leaders, because that's more comparable to it. But the problem is, and I'll give you the best case scenario. If you're in a rec center, like one of our super centers, for example, you need three or four people to be in various parts of the building in a busy setting. I'll give you ignore side because that's the one I'm most familiar with. Things haven't changed a whole lot. In the after-school time, when kids are out of school at 3:00, 3:30, and you could have 50 to 100 kids there, two full-time people can't watch. Kids inside, kids outside, kids in the bathroom, kids in the gym, in the activity room, the community room. You physically cannot see and be in all those places at once. So that's why we need all those extra part-timers, because those are the eyes. And they're either just watching the kids or participants, or they're actually hands-on doing a program or activity. And so, yes, we certainly considered that. But again, the best example I can give to you, and this would also, with more staff, it would allow us to change our hours and operate differently. I had nine part-timers at any given time when I was at Northside. And I had a full-time person that worked with me. But our hours were a little bit longer, too. We were open on Sundays, we were open longer during the day, so that afforded us the opportunity to provide more services. But I can promise you, I needed every one of the part-timers I had because we averaged 150 high school kids a day. That's a lot of kids to watch, especially when they're high school. It changes based on their age, but yeah, high school was a lot. So we really need the full-time to balance with, with as many part-timers we can get. And right now, we roughly have four positions to your, to your question. Question was how many of those are filled. We roughly have about four positions on average. Probably three is a better number at most of our rec centers. Those are the positions that are not filled, that we do have difficulty filling. Our wage is $12.50, don't know if that's the issue. But we have struggled since COVID to fill those part-time positions when we never struggled before. I kept thinking the staff were kidding with me that they just weren't interviewing or they just weren't finding the candidates they like. No, we're not getting applicants for that position anymore.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, madam. Seems like last year, we talked about a lot of capital needs, but this year, we're talking about a lot of personnel needs. I wanna ask you about two, the rec program specialists and the athletic program specialists. Just tell me what, tell me what they're in charge of and what they'll be doing.
So an athletic program specialist is someone who works with the leagues and/or directly runs a league here in the city. Currently, we have a division manager and one rec athletic specialist. And that's Sylvester Sheldon, who you've met. And he and Eli alone basically go from season to season because there's not enough time for them to work ahead. So that, when we get to football season, they'll start working with the football folks. When it's baseball season, which is baseball season, 365 nearly, they're working with the various baseball leagues. That's a lot. I mean, you yourself, you know, because you've, you've been a volunteer parent, a coach in, in the leagues, you know how many different people that is.
Yep, gotcha. The, how about the program specialist?
So, are we talking about, my apologies, are we talking about the recreation?
Rec program specialist.
Okay, that's the, that's the rec specialist two position, which is the position I referred to with the recreation centers and the senior centers. For being the number two, also at Britt David Cultural Arts. That's, it has a different beginning, basically, so whether it's seniors, recreation, or cultural arts. But the program specialist, I think here it's listed as program, yeah, program specialist, but we call them specialist twos.
Gotcha. The reimbursement program that we had, I guess we decided to use them as grants. Where is that this year?
We did not request that again. I wasn't sure if that was something that we needed, and my apologies. Maybe we should have asked for that so we could do that again, but that is not currently listed in our budget.
What do you think would be a sufficient amount?
It depends on if we're gonna broaden the conversation from what we previously had to expand beyond the one league. I think then we would need to come up with that same feat, like, like the formula that was figured. And we figured that out for each of the other sports. So then you're talking about adding football, you'd be talking about adding.
Soccer.
Soccer, my apologies.
That was the intention originally.
Yes, absolutely, yes, sir.
How about the Golden Park, the water increase, electricity increase?
So, I don't know how those slip through because once, once the Braves take over, we will no longer, we should not have any expense. There's probably gonna be some minimal on the outside portion. I'll have to see how, once it, all the dust settles and how the meters are. Because we still maintain, we still have the area that's right now adjacent to it.
Wouldn't those all be cut off and electricity cut off while they're during construction phases or covered under construction?
It should be, except for some of the sprinklers and the lights that are Georgia Power-based, those walkway lights.
They'll probably be putting new grass and new turf, right?
Yes, and some of it, but maybe not all of it.
Okay. The, how about the Marina bathroom, what's the status there?
So we received some funds, and I might have to defer to the, to the finance director for a moment because I do not, I apologize, I do not remember what the funds were. But we received some funding to do those. It might have been part of the mid-year, if I'm not mistaken. She's nodding yes. We have the funding to do that as part of this year's mid-year, and so we're working with Public Works to have that taken care of.
You said this year's mid-year, what do you?
Mid-year adjustments. So the funding was provided, is being provided to the department. We just found out, maybe a month, six weeks ago, that there would be funding for us to get that bathroom replaced.
So could you accelerate that if we put them on the front end?
Apologize, I don't.
In the budget versus mid-year?
Yes, if it was, yes, if, if it was, yes. But we have the funds already allocated for us now, so there's no need to.
You're talking mid-year.
Yes, ma'am, mid-year '24.
24.
So there's no need to ask for it. That's why we did not ask for it. Typically, it would have been in our budget because we've asked to do that.
Really, since it got burned down, that's really a risk management matter, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't that be a risk management matter since it got burned down?
So, and I'm not the best to answer this, but basically based on the cost with our insurance, there was not enough money to rebuild it.
We're self-insured, but they have.
Right, so being self-insured, it has to be anything greater than $50,000. The bathroom was only $150,000.
But they have the funds to cover that, right? Most likely.
I'm gonna defer to you. He's asking, would the insurance not have covered? And we did go to risk management to replace the bathroom at $150,000.
That's our insurance arm, right? Risk management?
Yes.
All right, the, the LED lights that you talked about, those are going in this coming year?
For, I'm sorry.
Cooper Creek?
No, they are not. That is why they are part of our budget request, because we do not have the funding for those.
So if we were to accelerate SPOST's money, then?
No. The, we only have $4 million to renovate the entire Cooper Creek Park, the park portion, not the tennis center. And that is a misconception. We only have $4 million that has to go to the entire park. So to dredge lake, fix trails, do things in the park. Right now, until we get that dollar figure back, I am not comfortable telling you that we can cover the LED lighting, which is a million dollars.
And what's the total amount, a million dollars you need to be?
A million dollars, yes, sir.
Okay, there was, at one time, I had heard there was a deferred type payment that would pay for the lights over long-term. Is that still an option that you're willing to look at?
We could look at it. That sounds like, and I think what you're referring to is what Sports Council did with South Commons when that project was done, and that's how they did it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about that, but I, I know there was a vendor willing to.
Yes.
Defer it for five to seven years, that it would eventually pay for the lights, and then you could pay it off gradually, which would be a, to me, a win-win for both sides. But are, are you still open to that?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then the last matter I got, if you would, Director Browder, Mrs. City Manager, if you would put a meeting together as soon as possible that we can re-circle back on the pickleball matter. That was actually a request by Counselor Kogel, I'm just. The messenger. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Crabbe.
It seems like the A.J. McClung Memorial Stadium goalposts would come out of SPOST or the TAD. Didn't, wasn't it coming from the SPOST? If not, we have funds from the TAD to replace those, don't we?
I think we had 1.6 million in the TAD. And we committed that for, to the A.J. McClung Stadium. I don't think we specified exactly what projects would come out of that 1.6. But, but that is literally all that was available in that TAD, and that's before the school district.
Well, this was 31, this is 31,240.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and it is part of A.J. McClung's, excuse me, McClung Stadium. So that could come out of the TAD. Is that what you're, are you confirming that, the 1.6 million that we set aside?
I, I don't think we've identified exactly there. There, there's tens of thousands of dollars, 100,000s of dollars that need to be done at A.J. We just gotta decide, you know, what's gonna come out of that, you know. I know the lighting is coming from the state.
Yes, sir.
For A.J. And, but there's a new scoreboard, there are seating, there is all kind of other stuff that has to be looked at. And then there's a priority list as to what you might wanna fund out of that 1.6.
Well, that's her number one priority because she said that she, she put these in, in rank. And so it sounds like that's a pretty high priority, too.
It sounds like it.
To add to the list of things when we're renovating A.J. McClung.
It, it sounds like that's a priority for it. I, I don't know what the other requirements are. And I don't think, you know, I think we need to get all of those listed before deciding. When, once she knows what they all are, that may not be her top priority. I don't know.
The other thing that I was thinking is maybe we get a sponsorship for those goalposts. So that, you know, their little, their little logo is right there on the goalpost. And maybe some, maybe a, an organization or a company would like to sponsor those goalposts. The other one was the inmate correctional vans. It seems like that could be, that could be done through Muskogee County Prison. And those could be paid for from OLOST. Since it's correctional vans, it's, it's, they're transporting inmates. So it could, the transportation of inmates comes from Muskogee County Prison.
Would have to think about whether or not it's OLOST. I'm not sure that it would be. But I don't, I'm not sure that it wouldn't be either. We'd have to look at that.
So maybe we could look into that possibility?
I think we can put it on the referral list as a question and get the answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
That would be good. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Yes, I forgot, Director Browder. Back to the LED lights. I, I'm pretty confident that we could probably raise the fees out there at the tennis, Cooper Creek Tennis Association if the, everybody knew that they were getting LED lights. I think they would really get excited about that. But at the same time, I would look at that as well. It's still a pretty good deal for anybody and everybody. I don't, I don't know what that means as far as revenue generated, but, and I'm not sure how that helps out. But would you look at that and maybe send an email or something and just maybe address that a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Are there any?
If there were five items from all of this list that you would want us to add, what would they be?
I apologize, Counselor Crabbe. I don't know that I can tell you that. If you take it based on face value of what we shared, it'd be the top five things that are on the list. Because before we bring our list to, to you guys, especially this year, staff have met and determined these were the greatest needs.
But there's several lists here. There's a capital outlay, then there's operational adjustments.
So could she bring that to you at the next meeting?
Yes.
Can I ask a point of clarification, please, sir?
Sure.
Are we saying from all three lists because they're, well, all four lists, there's a capital.
From all of, I don't, I don't care which list it comes from.
Okay.
Just if you, if you wanted five things from whatever list that your five most important things.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's not already included, of course, yeah.
That's right.
Yes.
Because I think some of these things on this list have been included in the, in the budget already.
Some have, yes, ma'am, and I tried to point those, yes.
That's kinda confusing, okay.
And, and I will tell you that Parks and Rec made a request for 92 new positions because they've lost a lot of, over the last 20 years or more, positions. And, and they are attempting to get back to where they were more than 20 years ago. And so they asked for 92 positions. And, and what we've requested in here for them is 19 of the 92 that they requested. That was in an effort to try and make some improvements.
Mr. City Manager, are you saying there are 19 in the current budget proposal?
Out of the 92.
Out of the 92. So if we wanted to increase that 19, it would have to be on the add/delete list?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. And you will bring back to us if one of, some of those positions are some of the five that outstanding issues that Counselor Crabbe was talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other, any other comments for Ms. Browder? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And you will put her on the agenda for next week, will you, Ms., okay, great, thank you. Thank you. Next, we have the Public Works presentation. Welcome, Ms. Short.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. I am going to give a presentation based on what wasn't approved in our budget. That the mayor graciously gave us quite a bit of things, and we were very grateful for that. But there are some things that we need to outline that really will affect our performance and our service availability for our residents as we go throughout the year. But I do wanna thank him for being very mindful of all of the responsibilities that we have and the fact that he was very gracious in what he did recommend going forward. So Public Works, if you're not familiar with us, are, and I'm sure you all are, of course, but we are comprised of four totally different funds. You have the general fund, which incorporates administration, animal control, fleet management, facility maintenance, and cemeteries. You also have the paving fund, which encompasses urban forestry and beautification, paving and repairs, that's your street maintenance, as well as communities, the community service section that handles. that handles all of your probationers that are sentenced by the courts, to do community service throughout the, throughout our community. And then, of course, we have the Stormwater Fund, which handles all of your infrastructure underground for your rainwater management to be, uh, to take all the water out. Um, and then, of course, you have the infamous Integrated Waste Fund, which I see in my sleep, I think twenty-four hours a day when I am sleeping. So as you can see, Public Works is comprised of four different funds, and a lot of different divisions that each have a very unique responsibility in what we do to maintain our community as a whole. So again, I'm just gonna go over the things that were not recommended to go forward to make my presentation more, uh, understandable and also, um, shorter, to be honest with you. So for the Director's Office, one of the first things that I did request was a Finance Manager. This Finance Manager, uh, would be handling all of our, um, revenue intakes. We have a lot of revenue been intake throughout various areas of our department, from the landfills to animal control, to the garbage feeds, et cetera. And I don't have anyone that is available to make sure that all of those checks and balances are done as they should be done, um, every day. So the Finance, uh, the Finance Manager position, I am recommending to be a Grade 122 at sixty thousand eight seventy-one with benefits. It was not in our budget originally, but we decided that we could forego a, a position that was recommended in the budget in order to have this position in place because it's so needed. To obtain the funding for this position, I'm recommending that we forego one electric, electrician position approved under Facility Maintenance as a G-119, and reduce the overtime budget for Animal Control by six thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars. These two factors will change, or changes will pay for the difference in cost for the salary of a Grade 122 with benefits. Again, the, this, the decision to forego this is based on the fact that the Judicial Center and other buildings do not slide it to come onboard for another couple of years, and we feel that we can, um, go ahead and use that position for this purpose, and then come back later and ask for it in the future if we find that we need it again. All other General Fund challenges and needs would be Fleet Management. And in Fleet Management, we are requesting two, uh, excuse me, five Fleet Maintenance Technicians at a Grade 118 for two hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars. Those are not budget-neutral positions, these are brand-new positions, but they're much-needed positions. Currently, in the truck shop alone, we have, as you know, those forty new automatic side loaders that have been added to our fleet, those on top of the other new equipment coming in, a total of three thousand plus vehicles that we are now responsible for making sure are up to par and able to hit the street anytime it's, they're needed. The growth that we've been receiving as it relates to the number of vehicles coming into our fleet, we need mechanics, it, it is what it is. Right now, I can tell you that the service timeline for one ASL is, is at a minimum of four hours. Four hours, that's for one truck. So if we were to receive these five Fleet Maintenance Tech Two positions, we would put three into the truck shop to handle those, as well as two in the heavy equipment shop to help with nothing but landfill equipment, which is desperately needed. To back up some of the information, to give you some backup information that we need to ensure that you understand the, the, the need for these, uh, positions, you can see right here that in the truck shop, we have two hundred and seventy-five pieces of equipment, and the heavy equipment shop, we have three hundred and eighty-six. Um, and in the work order division, or the work orders as a whole that are coming in, that they are working on, this is the number of vehicles that they're actually working on. During the year, we had two thousand five hundred and six work orders for the truck shop, and seven hundred and sixty-nine work orders for the heavy equipment shop, and that is a lot for eight mechanics to handle, eight. And let me just go back and say, in the heavy equipment shop, there's only three mechanics. So that's a lot of equipment that they are working on and trying to keep up and keep, um, serviced, that they are able to be on, on the road and doing the job that we need them to do. Just to give you some more information as to how we determine our needs as far as mechanics are concerned, we are using the ASE, uh, certification formula, as well as the, uh, National Association of Fleet Managers, uh, formula to determine exactly how many mechanics we do need, and as you can see here, with eight mechanics working forty hours a week at fifty-two weeks per year, we're totaling about sixteen thousand six hundred and forty hours in the shop working on this, on these vehicles. That's two hundred and seventy-five trucks. If we had the additional, uh, mechanics, we would only, we would, if we didn't have the additional mechanics, we would need twenty-two thousand hours in order to maintain these forty trucks. Right now, we're only maintaining them with sixteen thousand six hundred and forty hours. So there is a shortage and a need for these mechanics, and that is why we are asking for these additional mechanics. That information is in your packet, along with at the very bottom, it shows you the difference in the formula and how we determine our mechanic needs for these shops. Other General Fund challenges and needs under Fleet Management, again, it's just a repeat of what we talked about. The side loaders take a minimum of four hours just to do a service. That's not to include any form of breakdown or unexpected breakdown that we may have to repair. And the service time is so long because of the intricate hydraulic system that is, uh, incorporated in these vehicles that we have since, that we have purchased. So again, in the mechan, the mechanics in the truck shop, we currently have eight. We wanna add three more to that. We have, uh, vehicles that we support in the shop right now are two hundred and seventy-five. In the heavy equipment shop, currently, we only have three, we wanna add an additional two to help this shop to maintain the majority of all of our large equipment. This is landfill equipment. This is also, uh, bush hogs, street sweepers, anything that is considered or classified as heavy equipment based on the weight of the equipment and some of the hydraulics in the equipment. Animal Care and Control, as you know, Animal Care and Control has been a challenge, uh, we've been challenged by our, our community, actually, as far as what we're able to do based on what we have, as far as staffing is concerned, our facility is concerned. We've been inspected, uh, on schedules, we've been inspected off schedules, we've been inspected just due to, um, complaints. So we recognize that the community has a very high expectation of us, and we, we feel, and I feel, that we're doing a great job of that, but there are some things that we do feel that we need in Animal Control to help us to do an even better job. So under operate, under, uh, Personnel Needs for Animal Control, we requested eleven Animal Control Officers. We were recommended to receive three, that will leave a difference of seven. Uh, full-time positions that we are still in need of, that we're asking for at a Grade 116, all of these will be shelter or field Animal Control Officers at a cost of five hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Um, based on NACA, that's the National Animal Controls Association's best practices and guidelines, our shelter right now is short, four point five off, officers. That's based solely on the number of intakes or impalements that we have coming into our facility. Um, out of that eleven, we were asking for one part-time Animal Control Officer as well that would act in the capacity of a fill-in officer. Right now, if an officer wants to take vacation or calls out sick, we have to either bring someone in who was scheduled to be off to cover for that individual in order to make sure that we are able to operate the shelter as well as run the field or operate the field as we need to. So again, we asked for eleven, we were recommended three, and we are still asking for those additional eleven.
May I interrupt you just a minute? Um, we are going to, um, excuse the mayor. Uh, he's going to represent the city this afternoon, um, at four o'clock for the Peace Officers' Annual, uh, uh, Memorial Service, and I, I know that when he leaves, people will see him leaving, we wanna know that's where he's going, to represent the city at the Peace Officers'. This is Police, Peace Officers' Week, uh, nationally, and he's gonna represent us at that, uh, event, so Mr. Mayor, you'll, hopefully, we'll let you know if you need to come back. Hopefully, we'll be through before you get through that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, I hope, I, I'm not gonna be long. No, no, thank you. In Animal Control, we also asked for two maintenance worker positions, and I, I think you all would recall, I've explained to you before that, because we were receiving so many complaints about cleanliness of the facility, and I knew my people were doing a good job, but they were doing double duty, if you will, doing their normal job plus doing the cleaning, and that's very taxing. So I took an employee who, uh, was in another department, just picked him up and brought him over and said, "All you have to do is clean this facility." So that's all he does right now, he's doing nothing but cleaning the runs, cleaning the restrooms, cleaning all the common areas. Well, he's a borrowed employee, and I really need to give him back to the division that we brought him from, because the division needs him. Um, so we still need those maintenance workers to do nothing but handle the cleanl, cleaning and cleanliness of this facility. It is a requirement of the state that we make sure that our facility is clean, and I'm a stickler for smells personally. And I don't like to smell anything when you walk in our shelter, and if you go in our shelter, you may get a slight hint, but you're not gonna get what you smell in a lot of other shelters, so um, it's really important to us that we remain, that we obtain those two new people, because I do need to, uh, return that position back to the division that has been gracious enough to loan them out to us in order to maintain our facility. We also requested an Assistant Division Manager, and all of our divisions in Public Works has an Assistant Division Manager but Public Works, and I, uh, excuse me, except for Animal Control. And that was, uh, simply because years ago, when it was considered special enforcement, and we had a, two different, um, uh, responsibilities in that division, we did have an Assistant Division Manager, and as we went through our position cuts through the, uh, I believe it was the nineties or the early two thousands, that was one of the positions that was cut. But we definitely need an assistant in, in that facility, mainly because of the traffic that comes through there, but also to help handle the facility if the Division Manager is away for whatever reason, if she's on, uh, out sick, on vacation, or in a meeting. Uh, we really need someone with management background to be able to be there to assist anyone that comes to the door that needs assistance, or to handle any issue that may come up. I will also say that the Assistant, uh, Division Manager will also help in managing the astronomical number of open records requests that we receive from the public through the City Attorney's Office on a daily basis. Right now, uh, the Division Manager is trying to handle anywhere on average between, I'd say thirty-five to forty, open records requests, and when you get an open records request, it requires researching our documents, and that can take a lot of time out of her day. And I really need her focusing on programs and, and, and brainstorming ways of getting the animals out of there, not looking at records all day trying to make a seventy-two hour window, so an Assistant Division Manager would be just a blessing for that division to help her, uh, keep, keep up with everything that's going on in the Animal Care and Control world, because it's a very busy world that shifts every second of every day. So we would ask that you would consider bringing that position back. For operational increases, the only thing I'm gonna go over, the, the line items that were not, um, either funded or, uh, special items that we asked for that were not funded. So under, uh, line item sixty-three thirty-nine under the Animal Control Budget, veterinarian services, um, we requested an increase due to the increase in medical supplies, medical medications, microchips, and vaccinations increased. We asked for an increase of a hundred and seven thousand dollars, which would allow us to microchip everything that is adopted out of our facility, and we do think that that is very important. Uh, we do know that's something that our community is asking for. Um, microchipping is, as you know, an internal dog tag, if you will, it tells us who the owner is, uh, where they live, um, uh, the phone number to make contact with the owner, and having a microchip in every animal also forges the ability to be able to take that animal back to its house and not even have to bring it to the shelter. So I, I would love to see it be mandatory, um, and that may be something we need to bring back before you later, but for right now, for everything that's adopted in our facility, we would definitely like to see it be microchipped. So we asked for that increase to accommodate not just microchipping, but also the cost of medications. All the vaccines that we're giving, they are not cheap, and we have to be able, as you heard this, this morning, we had a person appear complaining that a vaccine wasn't given, even though I know it was given. Um, but, you know, we need these funds in order to continue to buy the medication supplies that we need to be able to vaccinate all these animals. Sixty-seven ninety-three is our special events line item, it's strictly for our, um, volunteer coordinator, she is the one that coordinates all of our adoption events. Every weekend, we are trying to do something to ensure that our animals are exposed and are available for adoption. Um, you've seen the new, um, um, adoption trailer, which we are just thrilled to have. We are working right now to get everyone trained so that everybody can, uh, can drive that thing. I didn't realize it was such a challenge to drive one, but everyone is being cha, uh, trained right now in order to drive that adoption trailer to make sure that it goes from location to location. We try to do a minimum of two events a day, that's a lot, but we can do it. But we do need funding for the purpose of making sure we have the brochures, making sure we have volunteer shirts for our volunteers, making sure we have appropriate, um, uh, tables and chairs for our volunteers, just the things that they need in order to set up an event, to make it look festive, to make it look inviting for the public to wanna come over and adopt our, our animals. So we did ask for that four thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollar increase to help us to be able to do that when we have our special events. Sixty-seven twenty-nine is a fee-based program, uh, line item that we're asking for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and I know that sounds like a lot of money, but it is for spay and neutering. Um, I think you've heard the cry of our community that they would love to see everything coming and being adopted out of our facility be actually fixed before it goes into the hands of the public. Right now, as you know, we're using a voucher program, which is not very, uh, efficient by any means, but it was the only thing that we had to work with at the time. Now, the voucher program provides, uh, seventy-five dollars to the individual to take to the veterinarian, to apply towards the cost of spay or neutering. We're asking for these funds in order for us to be able to work it out with a veterinarian, make a, a partnership with a veterinarian in town that would be able to do the spay and neutering for us either at that price or possibly a little bit higher price. But I think it's something that we definitely wanna have done.
Counselor Allen?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any communities that have mandatory spay and neuter?
Yes. Absolutely. I mean, you wanna come speak on that? I'm not sure of the name of the communities, but it's been a long time since I focused on Animal Control, but there are communities that I know of, especially in the Midwest, that have mandatory spay and neuter.
Good evening, uh, good afternoon, yes, there are communities, uh, that have mi, uh, mandatory spay neutering as well as microchipping. Um, right up the street in Macon is one of those communities.
Up the street where?
Macon, Georgia.
Macon, okay, alright, thank you.
And understand that mandatory spay or neutering will help with the overpopulation problem that we have. It, it's just something that, excuse me, we should've been doing a long time ago. We use the voucher system, but it is not efficient, so we're asking for this two hundred and seventy-five thousand to start this program to make sure that, we can have our animals fixed before they're adopted.
If, if we had, another question, if we had a full-time veterinarian, would that help go a long way towards the spay and neuter?
Well, let me say this, our facility is not designed with any form of medical suite, if you will, that would allow that veterinarian to do that spay or neuter surgery in a, um, sanitized location as required. So we would have to either build an additional, an addition onto our current facility, which would be a medical suite, to do those, but yes, our veterinarian could do that if we had that suite available. The other thing that I did have on the list as well, as part of our capital outlay, is a, uh, mobile spay-neuter clinic. That's something that we've not talked about before in the past, but it's something that we should consider. It's a, a, a clinic on wheels that can go to any place in the community and set up and do spay-neuter. It can be low cost, it could be normal cost, whatever our cost would be, uh, for anyone in the community that needed their animal spayed or neutered. Um, so that's another way of doing it. He could do it in the spay-neuter, the mobile spay-neuter clinic.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. They do. They absolutely do. They absolutely do, they sure do. And, and the, the challenge with Paws is they're often booked. They're, they are doing an outstanding job in offering low-cost spay neuters, and people are taking them up on it. But, um, there was a time when we were in fact utilizing their veterinarian for that purpose. Uh, and the problem, what happened, Councilman Crabbe, was we, we stayed booked and we found that we were having to euthanize animals that went over for that service. So it was a, I'm not going to say a waste of time or a waste of money, but it, well, it was a waste of money because we still had to pay them for it. We were paying them fifty dollars per animal. They wanted to go up, almost doubled it, for that service on top of them already handling the public. So we just found that we didn't have the funding at the time to be able to pay that. Um, they were booking up left and right every day. If you go by our facility, you'll see that it is packed over there with people getting their animals fixed.
Is there room in Animal Control to create a surgery room?
So we have a euthanasia suite, which is basically just one table, but I would say no. We would have to build out because of the equipment that would have to be in there, the anesthesia, all the different things that are utilized in a surgical suite because it's a similar surgical suite to what we have to have when we have surgeries. So we would have to definitely build onto the facility to do that. But either way, if we, if, if you wanted to consider that, that would be a great, great move, not only just for the facility, but for the community. Um, it would be a great move if we went towards a mobile spay neuter clinic. Um, the, the mayor's already approved the veterinarian position at a comparable salary. So we're on the right track, but there are some improvements that we do need to make.
Does the adoption trailer, could it be to come adopted to a mobile spay neutering?
No. I think what you're asking is, is current adoption trailer that we have have the ability to be converted into a mobile spay neuter clinic? I would say no, only because of the way it's designed. Um, you've got, and can you correct me if I'm wrong, but you've got cages on the lower end and the upper end on both sides. So you would have to be able to take those out, put in a surgical table, plus all the other equipment that's needed. I don't think there's enough room, honestly, in width. About three seventy-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So I would think that a surgery tra- trailer would probably cost more because of the surgical equipment?
Oh, wait a minute, I think I misunderstood, you asked me how much did the adoption trailer cost? I'm sorry, no, the adoption trailer was about forty to forty-five thousand. A surgical mobile spay neuter clinic would run you about three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Okay.
If we can move the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. So for facilities maintenance, um, the items that were not, um, well, sixty-three nineteen was funded as we needed it, but it was also funded with, uh, three hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars. That's just placed in the wrong location, um, Madam Finance, our director. It needs to go under sixty-five thirteen service contracts, um, which is, we asked for that increase due to the various contractors utilized throughout the government, that's the generators, maintenance, the elevator maintenance. Um, the sixty-three nineteen is the health department, I think that's where we get confused with sometimes. So if we can just make that adjustment, we'll be good. Sixty-seven twenty-eight, we did ask for an increase in operating materials of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's only because of the cost that it's costing us right now to just make repairs throughout this government. Well, I'm not talking about contracted repairs. This is just to go by a pump that needs to go into a fountain or things of that nature. The cost is just astronomical and we are, uh, really, uh, going over budget and transferring money into that account in order to be able to buy the parts that we need to make, all the repairs that we need. Here is a picture, uh, Madam Chairwoman and Councilor Crabbe, of the mobile spay neuter clinic, uh, truck, if you will. That's what one looks like. Uh, I did put that up there, I forgot I had that on there just so that you could see it. In the cemetery division, we asked for se- one seven-yard dump truck, one VAC con and one trailer. They were not appro- they were not recommended, but we do need those for the purpose of, uh, doing the maintenance in the cemetery that is required to keep them, uh, very presentable to our public. In the paving fund, uh, for repairs and maintenance, last year, uh, you all approved the milling machine, which was fantastic. We did not receive the crew, so we did add the crew back into this year's budget. That's one, heavy equipment operator, two, uh, equipment operator threes, and two, equipment operator twos, and two, maintenance workers. Um, and I've got the salaries right beside them, those pictures are pictures of what the milling machine does. It's almost like resurfacing, and if you've been on Milgen Road, up closer to, uh, just past Miller Road going towards Flat Rock Road, that is, that's an area that has been done by the milling machine, and it's almost like resurfacing. Urban Forestry and Beautification, we asked for two Public Works crew leaders and seven maintenance workers. This crew, these two cruises, for two crews would be focused solely on the inner-city mowing. Uh, most of our crews right now are on the long stretches, the highways and all those areas, but we're asking for two new crews that will focus solely on the inner-city mowing. And as you can see, there's times when we just can't get to it because we're so busy working on the other, uh, areas that are, uh, longer, wider, things of that nature. Community Service was granted a, um, grab-all truck last year, but we didn't get the operator. If we could get an operator, we would be very, very pleased. This person focuses solely on all the illegal dumping that's going on in our community. That's all that truck does, is goes around, picks up dumping, and handles all of our homeless camps that we have throughout the community that we are constantly having to tear down. So if we could get that position, um, right now, that position is being borrowed from Integrated Waste to make sure that we're able to handle those items as they're needed when we are requested for community service. In the paving fund, we also asked for, for Capital Outlay, we asked for, uh, one heavy-duty, low-profile trailer and one eighteen-yard dandum dump truck. Uh, the other things were approved and we appreciate that. Under Urban Forestry Beautification, we asked for two sixty-inch John Deere zero-turn mowers and three closed cab tractors. These are items that through time have just, need to be replaced. Most of, if not ninety, ninety-five percent of all the equipment we've requested is replacement equipment. Want to make sure that you're aware of that. Um, for Integrated Waste, uh, Solid Waste, we're asking for a cart replacement team. It's something that we had in our budget, we feel that we desperately need it. This crew would be doing nothing but delivering carts, repairing carts, uh, returning carts if need be so that we don't have to buy as many carts. We, we heard you loud and clear, we don't want to be buying carts all the time. And oftentimes, a person will call and say, "Hey, my lid is not on my cart anymore." We can just send the cart team out there, pop a lid on them, and they're good to go. My wheel came off, we go out there, we put a new wheel on it. If it's something that we cannot fix, then of course we will have to replace it. But that is exactly what that team will be doing, responding to all of those questions, I mean, to all those concerns. Pine Grove Landfill, we're asking for some assistance out there, they're very short-staffed and we need some help. We need six maintenance workers out there, one heavy equipment operator, and one correctional detail officer. Um, for yard waste, if we, we don't enact the one-car system, we're going to have to, uh, get some more drivers to help us get all the waste up off the ground, and we're asking for fourteen CDL drivers to do that. Under Waste Collection for our operating, our line item sixty-seven twenty-eight, we asked for an increase of five hundred eleven thousand dollars. That's due to the increase in the cost of materials. That's your black carts that we will be needing to purchase in the future. Um, under sixty-seven eighty-one, uniforms were increased due to the increase in staffing, as well as boot costs and uniform costs increased. And of course, in yard waste, we're asking for four hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and forty dollars to do, uh, cart replacements if needed for the green carts. Also, under Waste Collection, under Capital Outlay, the things that were not recommended to go forward was three trash compactors that we desperately need, and they're needed in locations that we're proud of and we hope that you are proud of, one of them being the new City Hall. Because if you realize, down on, on Broadway, there's just no place to put trash cans. We don't want it to look like an uptown area full of trash cans. This is a trash compactor, we already have a location that we can put it in, and our maintenance people or our custodians will just take all of the trash from City Hall to that compactor and not have to worry about putting it out on the street. The other location is around the corner on First Avenue. It can be used whenever we have events downtown and leased out to those individuals that are having the events. And of course, the Civic Center, right now, the Civic Center has, I want to say, four dumpsters, and a trash compactor would help them in maintaining their area as well. We asked for two eleven-yard mini rear loaders, those are replacement loaders that we need in order to be able to get all of those very tight areas up in Bibb City that have very narrow streets. Um, that's what we use those for, and we would like to get those replaced because it's, they're, they're old and they need to be replaced. And we're asking for one mid-sized SUV replacement, uh, SUV for that division. Um, also, for Uptown and Private Collection Programs, and it's a way for us to make more revenue, is to order two roll-off trucks and ten thirty-yard containers. What we're recommending is basically providing Uptown with the means of handling their waste when they have special events. Right now, we tell them, you have to call a, a private solid waste company in order for them to come in and be able to handle your waste collection. We think we can also do that and provide some revenue, uh, create a revenue-generating, um, program for that collection, for that special area. We're also asking for front load refuse trucks. That's just a safety issue for all of the dumpsters that we have within Muskogee County, city-owned property only. We'd like to change those dumpsters from rear loaders to front loaders and then use a front loader refuse truck in order to empty them, but it only takes one person to do it, whereas now with the, uh, rear loader, it takes three. Um, just to repeat, the, uh, cart repair and replacement team, we asked for two, uh, twenty-two-foot box trucks. We were received, we were recommended one, and we still need that other one, and we want to make sure that you're aware of that. Pine Grove Landfill, which is an area that needs a lot of financial assistance in getting the equipment that we need in order to maintain that landfill and maintain the lifespan that we've been given for this landfill, one being the grinder, which is utilized in the inner portion of the, of the landfill that grinds up all the green waste. Um, we also need to replace a water truck, and we need to replace that water truck desperately. The one we have right now is two thousand and five. EPD requires us to have a fully functioning water truck on that landfill. Any event, a fire breaks out on the landfill, and if you think about it, we get paint, we get anything that's thrown in that truck is dumped into that pit, and if a fire breaks out, we've got to be able to put it out. The fire truck we have right now, uh, is on its last leg, and we need to replace it. It's a two thousand and five, uh, we have patched it and will continue to patch it, but we definitely need that water truck in place for the landfill. The D-two Dozier, uh, excuse me, is something that we need to work with the, the compactor as well as the D-seven in spreading that waste out. Um, and we also need to replace our large compactor and a CAT seven-thirty haul truck, which is your off-the-road truck, dump truck, it's a huge dump truck. Integrated Waste, Capital Outlay Yard Waste, we also asked for five grab-all trucks. These are replacement trucks for our current graballs. We're asking for two forty-yard trucks and three twenty-seven-yard trucks. And let's talk about Waste Collection rate fees. So we know the rate increase has been a topic of discussion at council for, for a while now. We just want to make a, a simple recommendation that the garbage fee go from eighteen dollars to twenty-one dollars with an annual increase of two dollars per year per bill for the next five years. By FY thirty, we will be charging only thirty-one dollars per residential bill for waste collection. However, we also recommend that after that initial five years, we recommend an increase of two-point-five percent per bill for the next five years going into twenty thirty-five. These increases will allow us to maintain our current service level for waste collection as well as implement our waste equipment replacement schedule, which is something that we desperately need to start. This is just a chart that I provided for you that shows you exactly what the, the garbage fee would be per residence at the rate that I just quoted for you, the two dollars per year, the first five years, and then after those five years, the two, two-point-five percent per bill. Um, just to recap, um, I do want it to remind you that we are getting very close to the time that we are going to have to start on Phase Five of our landfill. Uh, Phase Five is the next pit area, we're looking at about ten million dollars to get that prepped and ready to start taking in waste. We also need to start putting money aside for closure, post-closure. Um, you know, my granddaddy used to say, "If you walk down hallway, look in the mirror and come back, the time will be here." The time is very near, we need to start putting money aside for that purpose. We're looking at twenty, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years down the road, but it's going to come here quicker than we know. I've been here forty-one years and I don't even feel like it, sometimes I think it's only been ten years. So we definitely need to put some money aside for landfill closure, post-closure, cost care. And of course, again, um, I was asked if I would support a landfill maintenance fee that would be assessed to, um, residents as well as commercial entities here in Muskogee County. And of course, I would because landfill equipment is not cheap. Uh, one compactor can cost you forty million dollars. It's, it's just not a cheap piece, a, a cheap entity that, to run and operate. So we do want to let you know that we would be in favor of that, but we also, uh, understand that there's more discussion needs to have, be had when it comes to that. Um, closing points, mo- uh, mobile spay neuter clinic would be an investment for our animal community. It will be received as a positive action that this council will have taken and as a definitive tool to be used in our community to help stop the pet overpopulation problem. Our cemetery division is in need of additional land, and our deputy city manager has been working diligently on doing that. But I did want to bring up the fact that mandatory cremations is something that is trending, uh, for communities in the United States for public, um, cemeteries. So it is something that we'll be bringing back to you, something that we think that we need to consider for our own, uh, cemeteries here as well for the future. Um, and again, the additional integrated waste personnel and equipment will be needed if we want to keep it at, at the, the service level, at the current level that it is right now, without adopting a one-car system, those fourteen drivers would be needed. And lastly, Pine Gl- Pine Grove Landfill, I just can't express it enough. We've got to start putting money aside for closure, post-closure. It's an EPD requirement, we've got to be able to provide that information should they ask for it. And, um, I did want to remind you as well that the Integrated Waste RFP was extended but was closed on the tenth of May. Uh, I, matter of fact, received an email this morning asking for a date that we can have our first meeting to, uh, to prep everyone that's going to be on that committee, uh, to decide on if we're going to do, uh, privatization or not. So those numbers should be available for us, I'm hopeful, uh, Madam Finance Director, within the next week or two. We should know exactly what kind of submissions we receive and what kind of cost it's going to be.
We have a question from Councilor Davis.
Yes, sir.
Director Shaw, good presentation and, uh, I appreciate your passion. The chipper?
Yes, sir.
Is it currently working or do we need a new one or?
No. We were able to repair the old one, but we need a new one, that's what I call a grinder, you call it a chipper, it's the same thing. But, um, we need a new one. Right now, we have the old one working, but we also have a company, a contractor, that is charging us to bring in their grinder as well as hauling that debris away.
Okay, the, uh, you mentioned about the, um, fleet management, about needing three more in fleet management, which is maintenance, right?
Fleet maintenance technicians, yes, sir.
Okay, and then you've got the Facilities Division down there, which, you know, I'm, I am an advocate of that because I'm a big believer in upkeeping maintenance. Um, do you feel comfortable with all these salaries? You think that we're going to be able to hire and, you know, recruit or to go find them or take them or whatever?
Let me first say that we're constantly, we're constantly recruiting. Um, I even have a specialized recruiter in the back who, it doesn't matter what it is, he's going to go find somebody that's interested. And the city manager, as he stated earlier today, has always been very gracious in looking at the salaries that the individual is requesting to see if it's something that we can do. And for the most part, so far, it has been that way. The problem is, once they've come on, within a month, they've got another offer that's even better and they go. So I do think we do need to look at all of our facility maintenance salaries for sure, but not just, uh, one, I think all the disciplines need to be looked at because they're very, um, they're very sensitive in what they do.
What was the, uh, number on the mechanics?
The funny, the salary?
The three, isn't it, three, yeah, what was that number?
Hold on one second, I can tell you. Hold on one second, I can tell you. Um, for, well, I have it for five. It's two forty-nine, four thirty-one, but it's a grade one eighteen.
What's that number?
Two four nine, four three one. The grade for each one is a G one, uh, one eighteen.
Can you say the five?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am. Three for the...
Forty-nine thousand, eight eighty-six.
Thank you.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
Thank you for that. And we need, we need three for heavy equipment and two for the shop.
How much?
Just round it up, fifty thousand pieces.
Fifty thousand a piece.
For three?
Each one, fifty thousand.
Each, fifty thousand.
That's one fifty, right? You said two fifty.
Right, that's for five.
Oh, okay. Got you.
So, we need three in the, um, heavy equipment shop and two in the truck shop, I'm, truck shop.
Okay, the, uh, I, I have to, this is from another councillor that had to leave, asked me to ask some questions, but, uh, the, in Animal Control, the, um, the walk-in freezer, what, what, tell us about that, what that's for.
So, the walk-in freezer is for our, what we call eighty-six-twenty collection. Those, that's the animal control officer that has a, uh, two-fifty pickup that goes around town and picks up all the deceased animals that are found on the road. So, the cooler is utilized for the purpose of him bringing those animals back if he doesn't have any more or if we have to euthanize. Those animals are placed in the cooler, so it keeps the odor down, keeps the disease down. And at the end of the day, we empty out the cooler and go to the landfill.
The, uh, back to the, uh, what, we can call it landfill closure fee, uh, maintenance fee, uh, any kind of fee we want to, I guess, terminate. I'm a big believer in that. I think we're gonna have to do it with all these needs that you have up here that you've expressed. Uh, and that's the one, I'm talking outside the, the fifty-eight thousand that pay into the Integrated Waste Fee. And I think we're exploring that. And you said that the department is, uh, in favor of doing that. Or would support it.
Absolutely.
Okay, and, uh, certainly, that would bring in additional revenue that we could do a lot of the stuff that you talked about, which, which, which is needed. The, the other thing, I just want to say this in general in the last two presentations. I'm, I'm a big advocate, I'm, it's kinda spinning around in my mind right now on being cost-effective, uh, but also efficient at the same time. I think there's some things that are being asked for here that we really need to, to understand if we can consolidate and bring under one roof. And I think we can do it at a more, from a more cost-effective standpoint and at the same time, provide the needed services versus spreading them out throughout, out our government. I really want to look at that and, and probably, uh, speak more about it next week, uh, Madam Chair. So, um, that is, uh, those are my questions, uh, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Crabbe?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No? Other questions? Are there any, anything to go on the add/delete list today for that?
Are you gonna wait till the end or you want to do it now?
Well, if you want to go ahead and, and do something for, for this one now, that would be the thing to do.
Okay, uh, well, I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna cover the last one and this one. Um, I think they, uh, said, uh, Madam Budget Chair, that they had the funds to go ahead and build the bathroom at Lake Oliver, right? Okay, so I'm, I don't need to do anything with that. Uh, I'm gonna add a hundred and fifty thousand for the reimbursement program for parks and wrecks. I think Director Browder has an idea of that program for all, uh...
Now, Counselor Davis, you know that she's coming back next week to go through all of that to tell us what the top five are that she thinks are important. Do you want to wait for that?
I'm, I mean, I'm just, if you want me, I can do that. I mean, if you want me to wrap it up then, I can do that. I was just gonna add it on the list, but I can wait.
Why don't we, why don't we wait until we get back, uh, her, her, uh, five most important things? And we'll start the meeting next week with that, um, with that issue. But if you have things for the parks and, I mean, for...
Public Works?
Public Works, go, let's go ahead and put those on.
Okay, all right. So, uh, I've had an opportunity to talk to several veterinarians, and we've got a one-seventeen price on there. I would like to bump that up to one-thirty-five, that the veterinarians are confident that we would be able to hire somebody. I think Paul's is a little higher than that, so that's, had to add eighteen K to a full-time veterinarian. Counselor Garrett wanted me, uh, to add on, he's an advocate for the spay neutering at two-seventy-five. He asked me to add that on to the list. The, uh, medications that you talked about and tracking, you said, was a very important matter. That's one oh seven, seven fifteen.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to add that on there as, as well. I think the veterinarian would be appreciative of that, would need that. And, and, and the reason I'm doing this is because I think, I believe that the department can track and follow this and see the impact of it. You agree with me?
Absolutely.
So, we can watch this for a year along with a full-time vet. They're gonna need this.
And determine whether or not that animal has even been in our shelter.
And then we can start looking at the ratios and percentages and see if we're making a difference.
Absolutely.
And I think that's a great way to start a first-year program.
Okay.
The, um... Madam Budget Chair, let me just make sure, I just got all these rough notes over here. I didn't forget anything. I think that's, oh, the, uh, yes, your three, uh, uh, mechanics for a hundred and fifty K.
So, the cost for the fleet maintenance technician?
Right. Those are on the add list and would come out of the, uh, would come out of the fund balance unless the finance department has a better source of funding. But right now, that's where I'm de-designating it.
Right, I'm just gonna give you...
I'm open to those options. If you come back and tell me where you would prefer it.
Well, I'm just gonna give you the cost with benefits. Um, for one fleet maintenance technician, it's fifty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Right, that would be three.
Times three is one hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred eight dollars.
Right, my logic behind that, if you get the right people, they will save you money.
Okay, and, um, just for one point of clarification, um, Counselor Davis, the amount that's listed there in the letter is the salary with benefits. So, the salary, um, for the veterinarian is a, um, there you go. It is...
It's from one-seventeen to one-thirty-five.
Okay, so the salary that's in the budget right now is actually ninety-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars for salary. The amount that's listed in the letter is salary with benefits. So, do you want to add eighteen thousand to the ninety-six thousand? Or do you want the salary to be the one hundred and thirty-five thousand?
I would say start it at one-twenty-five with benefits.
One-twenty-five? For the veterinarian?
Full-time vet.
Okay. Oh, that's off the scale.
Okay. Anything else, Counselor?
So, one-twenty-five with the benefits is a total of one hundred fifty thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Director Short.
You're welcome, thank you.
Um, I do want to, um, add on to the add/delete list something that has not been discussed here yet today, um, so that we can, can talk about it next week. Um, the Chief of the Police Department salary is a hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And so is the Sheriff's salary. The Fire Chief's salary is, uh, sixteen thousand dollars less than that. And, uh, this Fire Chief has the largest department in the city government. He has four hundred and eight employees. And, um, I want to put on the add list the increase for the Fire Department Chiefs to equal the, um, Police Chief and the Sheriff. If you'll bring that back to us next week. Uh, anything else that you guys want to do, want to add at this point? Next week, we will have the Clerk of Superior Court, we'll have the Police Department, and we'll have, um, IT, um, Ms. Alexander, I thought the Fire Department was gonna be here next week. Have they decided they do not want to present? Okay, I thought Police and Fire were to be here next week, but maybe not.
I'll share it with the fire department.
Maybe not, that's okay. Uh, and then we will, uh, after we hear from those, uh, departments, we will start our add/delete list. So, if you have added something to the, uh, uh, budget, remember that you're gonna have to find a place to delete something from that budget. And so, that will be where we, uh, will start our, um, uh, add/delete list next week. Um, as I said before, we will be meeting over in the, um, School District Boardroom, uh, nine o'clock. We will start at nine o'clock and hopefully be, um, uh, out of there, uh, before five o'clock. So, anything else for the good of the order? If not, the meeting is adjourned.